Get started. Thank you. Members will take their seats. And if all visitors will retire behind the rail, I would appreciate it. Thank you. To give our own vacation this morning, the Chair recognizes Rabbi Ari Lev Bernary. I get it? Alright. Of Kohl Shadik. He's here today as a guest of Councilwoman Gim. I would ask all members and guests to please rise.
Last night and today, Jews around the world, including right here throughout the city of Philadelphia, celebrate the holiday of Purim. And we read from the story of Esther, which takes place in ancient Persia. A story about power, subversion, and survival. Twice, the story instructs us, "Na'afohu," turn it upside down. "The way things are," says the story of Esther, "the injustice in the world is not inevitable, it is not necessary, and it is our responsibility to invert it." On Purim, as we walk the line between the absurd and the profound, we dress up in costumes and drink to excess, to soften the judgments of ourselves and others. We celebrate those who leverage their power for good, those who organize the powerful into just action, and the importance of staying connected to pleasure and joy in a deeply broken society. Esther is the hero of the Purim story. The Jewish people are living in the sprawling Persian empire and are saved from Haman's evil scheme to annihilate them. One of my teacher explains that the most important verse in the entire Magilla, in the entire story of Esther, a verse that represents the pivotal turning point in the Purim story, comes near the end of chapter four, when Mordechai sends a message to now Queen Esther, urging her to reveal her identity to King Achash Barosh and plead on behalf of the Jewish people. Remarkably, Mordechai's message to Esther hinges on two simple words, two words that promise nothing and change everything. "Mi yodei," Mordechai says, "who knows? Who knows? Perhaps it was for such a time as this that you ascended to power." These are the words that set Esther in motion, that inspire her to take action, in spite of her own resistance, in spite of her fears about her own fate, in spite of her doubts about her own position and power in the king's court. Who knows? In this remarkable exchange between Mordechai and Esther, something amazing happens. "Who knows?" becomes not an excuse, but an invitation. "Consider the possibility," says Mordechai, "that you are here for a purpose. Consider the possibility that there is something bigger and more important than your fear. Consider the possibility that you have more power than you imagine. Consider the possibility that it is up to us to act out of love and responsibility for each other, to make sure that every community, that every resident of the city of Philadelphia has access to the basic building blocks of a dignified life. Access to equitable funding for our schools, standing, access to a world free from the expansion of fossil fuels, access to affordable housing, and an end to the tax abatement. Who knows if it wasn't for just a time as this that you are sitting on city council? This is the legacy of Mordechai and Esther, and they bequeath it to us. A legacy of humility and hope, of radical uncertainty and radical responsibility. What are our obligations in this topsy-turvy world? To take care of each other, to expand our circle of concern, to affirm the possibility of sweetness and generosity in the face of uncertainty, love, and fear. Who knows? Consider the possibility that this is why we are here, that in the face of a world of violence and uncertainty, we are commanded to be responsible for each other, to feed each other, to care for those in need, to increase peace and love and justice in our world. As Jews, we know what it feels like to be hunted and haunted by those who believe we are less than fully human. All of us, as people of faith and conscience, know that we live in an interconnected world and that injustice and violence anywhere tears at the fabric of God's creation. So may you who serve our city stay awake to the call to celebrate life and beauty, to uplift human dignity, and to use your power to turn things around. And let us say amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Rabbi, for those inspiring words. Council, be at ease. Thank you very much. And again, Rabbi, thank you for those inspiring words. We really appreciate it. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 14th, 2019. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 14th, 2019 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 14th, 2019. Stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome everyone who has come down to witness our government in action today. We genuinely appreciate you being here. We hope your stay here today is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you for being here. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Don, who presented a resolution honoring Vernon Odom. With Mr. Odom and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. And the big news tonight is Vernon Odom. Um, hold on. Folks, we have a little quiet, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor.
Good morning, everyone. And I came to Philadelphia in 1976, right after school, and the first news show I watched was Action News. And back in the late 70s, going back in time, many of you don't remember that, it was Jim Gardner, it was Jim O'Brien, may he rest in peace, Mark Howard, and Vernon Odom. And today, we're honoring Vernon Odom as he retires from his position as an Action News reporter for 6 ABC after 42 years. Whereas Mr. Odom has been covering the Philadelphia news for over four decades, and his reign on Action News has spanned the term of seven mayors, and...
Whereas arriving in Philadelphia in 1976, Mr. Odom has become a Philadelphia institution through to the point of, through his to-the-point interview style, as empathetic, fair, approach of reporting, and...
Whereas educated at Morehouse College for his undergraduate degree, and Columbia University for his postgraduate degree in broadcast journalism, Mr. Odom has spent the past 50 years as a reporter, and...
Whereas born in Atlanta, Georgia, and raised in Akron, Ohio, journalism runs in Mr. Odom's family. Vern's father, great-grandfather, launched the second African-American-run newspaper in the nation.
And whereas his sister, Maida Odom, was a longtime reporter for the Philadelphia Inquirer and now teaches journalism at Temple University, Mr. Odom's wife, Wanda Motley Odom, with whom he has two children, is also a former Inquirer reporter, and...
Whereas Mr. Odom got his start as a reporter in Georgia, covering stories in the deepest and still partially segregated South, the first news story that accelerated him to national attention was his interview with Coretta Scott King after Martin Luther King's assassination. It was an event that shook the nation, and Mr. Odom had the first and only interview for days, and...
Whereas Mr. Odom covered momentous events, both in Philadelphia and around the world. In Philadelphia, he covered many big stories, such as the accident at Three Mile Island, the move disaster, and Wilson Good's election as the city's mayor and the first African-American politician to hold that position.
Whereas Mr. Odom has reported from hotspots like post-Cold War Russia and Somalia, where he covered the humanitarian crisis, he covered the release of Nelson Mandela and South Africa's first free elections. Of his career as a reporter, Mr. Odom says, quote, "It's been a great ride and a ringside seat to the world," end quote.
And whereas with his unshakable understanding of politics, Mr. Odom has excelled in his career. His ability to ask direct, well-informed questions causes some politicians to squirm, but helps Mr. Odom get to the heart of the matter and tell the story, and...
Whereas Mr. Odom's peers describe him as a mentor for young reporters, and his interviewees say that he is so likable that even when he is reporting on a story that is unfavorable for them, they can't help but answer his questions, and...
Whereas, but before I enter that, I have a point of personal privilege and that I must bring out to this body. I've known Vernon Odom longer than anyone else in this room, for me personally. He covered a story when I was in arbor culture class at going to the tree-climbing class of Penn State University in Fairmount Park. That morning, I had a full head of hair, a heck of a lot thinner, and I was 70 feet up in a sycamore, looking at the Philadelphia Zoo. And who is there alongside with me in a tree, covering this for Channel 6 ABC, is reporter Vernon Odom. I'll never forget the day. It meant a lot to me. I know you've done thousands of stories, but it was pretty neat. Whereas recently awarded Person of the Year by Broadcast Pioneers of Philadelphia, Mr. Odom represents the best of the best. Throughout Mr. Odom's career, the realm of newscasting has changed tremendously, but Mr. Odom has remained a steady, deep-voiced presence that viewers can trust and put the story first, and...
Whereas although Mr. Odom has retired, he has no plans of slowing down. Future plans include a potential book reflecting on his 50 years as a reporter, and voiceover work that he's previously had to turn down. Mr. Odom loves the news and therefore will always be ready to provide commentary, analysis, or give lectures on the news, and...
Well, I don't have a sycamore story, or a tree story, but I do know that Vernon Odom has earned the admiration of our great city through his commitment to steadfast and honest reporting. Now, therefore, be it...
Let me say that I'm honored. I'm sorry I didn't think of it myself, and that I remember when Vernon first came, Lucian and I were here together. And he came from the beginning, doing a fabulous job of being great to us and our city, and we're grateful to be part of this resolution, resolved that the Council of this city of Philadelphia hereby recognizes and honors Vernon Odom for service to the Philadelphia community.
And the Chair recognizes Mr. Odom for remarks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmembers, for those kind words and remembrances. To Mr. Tallman Berger, sometimes I wound up up a tree myself. That's why I worried, that's why I didn't react that day. But I thank the Councilmembers for, and Council President Clark, I don't mean not to recognize you, sir, I'm reminded of one of your predecessors today. I love this room. I spent many hours in this room, covering all the intrigue and all of the fire and brimstone and hot air and sometimes, but it's been a magnificent experience keeping my eye on things and staying long after to find out what really happened there and what really took place there and trying to get the background on the story. But it's always been a wonderful place of people who are champions of free speech 98% of the time over the years, and this goes back a long time ago. Folks in this room, the duly-elected officials have always been trying to do the right thing and be progressive out of love for that town. There have been some fallbacks and some missteps and things like that, but always, this has been a positive place for free speech and people expressing their feelings and people loving this great city. I'm reminded today, I see the vote was 17 to nothing. Joe Coleman, one of your venerable predecessors, Mr. Clark, used to always say, "Vernon, I can't do a damn thing unless I can get nine votes in there. I gotta have them." And I thank you, Darryl. I know you had to push through to get all 17 unanimous for me this time. When Allen Dobbs' office first called me, I said, "Well, I may be able to squeak through there at 10, 10, 8 or something like, 10, 7 or something like that." But I'm very honored. I'm very thrilled to be here. This city, as many people don't know, is not my hometown. I'm not from Philadelphia originally, but I came here 43 years ago. And especially sentimental with Mrs. Blackwell here today because she and the late Lou Blackwell were very kind to me and told me a lot about what was going on in town and kept me posted. And there's so many people I'd like to thank today, but I'm deeply honored, and the city has been very good to me. As the great Latin ballplayer would say, it's provided me with a wonderful wife and a wonderful family, two children who are all born and raised in Philly, PA. And when I came here, I was nervous. I was coming from Atlanta, which was a much smaller southern town then, and I didn't know what was gonna happen. I was very, 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 very shy and bashful and sort of a country guy who didn't know what was gonna happen in this big city. And it's been a wonderful experience, and I'm not dying, folks. I'm gonna get up and run around the room here. I'm in perfectly good health. And I thank this city and its wonderful people, who've always been very kind and accepting of me, and it's been a magnificent choice I made. I could've gone back to my hometown area of Cleveland, Ohio at that time, but Philly was the right place for me. And I never figured out why, but the car headed up 95, and it got here before 95 was completed. And I want to thank everybody for this wonderful city. And some of the people I've known here were, Councilwoman here just told me she was four years old, but she remembers me on television. Well, that's fantastic, because I've watched most of the political careers here develop. Councilwoman Blondie Reynolds Brown, a longtime friend of mine, and I'm very thrilled and happy, and I thank you for this award. It means a heck of a lot. It's overwhelming, and I won't bore you, but thank you for having me, and I deeply appreciate it. Thank you so much to all the Councilmembers for recognizing my hard work and my dedicated work to this wonderful city. I have, as I've said, I've enjoyed it. And Denise James, my colleague out there is waving to me, that means it's time, with my wife not here, that means it's time for me to wrap it up and get off. So thank you, everybody. I appreciate it so much, you have no idea.
Council, be at ease.
One other thing I'd like to... Two members of the management team at 6 ABC, where I've been working for so long, doing what I did, with whom I did, Tom Davis, the news director and vice president of Channel 6, and Rob Royal, who is one of the executive producers there. Raise your hands, guys, and say hello so the crowd can see you. But I'd like to thank them for coming down today and taking time out of their busy schedule to be here to stand with me today. And I'm sorry I didn't mention them in my earlier remarks, but Council President, I actually got you to turn the mic back on. I've seen you turn it off a few times.
Only for you, Vernon.
And already, I'm hearing about all the intrigue going on with the elections coming up and things like that, just like I used to do in the old days when I was covering city council. Nothing's changed. The more things change, the more they stayed the same, but it's been fascinating. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations for your service to our Cindy. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who presented a resolution proclaiming March 2019 as Social Work Month. With Liz Hirsch and those accompanying her, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilman O., Councilwoman Blondie Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Heenan.
Mr. President, we really should be calling this Liz Hirsch and homeless week, but we are honored to have our wonderful friends and committed people to be here today to receive this resolution. Resolution hereby proclaiming March 19th as Social Work Month and encouraging all Philadelphians to support the social work profession.
Whereas the primary mission of social work is to enhance human well-being and help meet the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable. And whereas every day, social workers address the emotional, psychological, economic, and/or physical needs of millions of people, and...
Whereas social workers help people function better in their environments, improve their relationship with others, and solve personal and family problems through a wide range of services, and...
Whereas social workers are employed in...
Johnson. Who's right? Counsel, Councilman Heenan was next. Alright, whatever. You guys flip a coin.
I like you. Can't counsel again.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for your patience as well. Also, after today's council session, after the official acknowledgement of renaming the nineteen hundred block of Federal Street after Arizona Stemmons, there will also be a lunch inside the caucus room sponsored by the lovely ladies of Zeta Phi Beta Incorporated. Just wanted to make that announcement. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a lot of acknowledgements here, which is fantastic. This one's a little unprecedented, but on the first full day of spring, which is a lovely day, even though it's raining outside, the acknowledgement I want to make is to my mother, who is celebrating a milestone birthday today, on the lovely first day of spring. It goes with my lovely mother, who has done a fantastic job with her family, my family, her grandkids, and the community at large. So, life is always greener and better with my mother in it, and it is her birthday today. And I want to wish her, who watches every single session, who texts me during council, tells me, or am I awake, am I sleeping, and I watch your facial expressions, and is that a bean, or what does that? So, when I get home and we talk business, I always get a phone call, my mother tell me her opinion. And her opinion means a lot to me, and I want to thank her so much for being my mother, and happy birthday, Mom.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilman. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Councilmember Johnson, as well as council members Brown and Parker, for welcoming the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta to City Hall today. As a member of Capopside Fraternity Incorporated, I would be remiss in not celebrating another fine institution of our Divine Nine. Thank you for your leadership and your service to our community and our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Our next order of business is communications, and the chair requested the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. And Mr. Decker, if you can please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, I signed the remaining bills which were passed by council at its session on March seventh, two thousand nineteen, and that on March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at its session on March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, bill number one nine zero one zero two, and that on March twenty, two thousand nineteen, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at its session on March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, bill number one eight zero eight one eight. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution reappointing Michael Woodward to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion, and an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development properties located at forty-nine ten Botanic Avenue, fifty-fourteen Gray's Avenue, fifty-twenty-seven Gray's Avenue, and twenty-six thirty-nine South Fifty-Eighth Street, and further authorizing Pade to reconvey a portion of the property at forty-nine ten Botanic Avenue to the City of Philadelphia, all under允 subject to the terms and conditions of the Philadelphia Industrial and Commercial Development Agreement among the City, Pade, and the Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, I offered two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution honoring Philadelphia's philanthropic women leaders in recognition of Women's History Month.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to support Restore Pennsylvania: Governor Tom Wolf's 4.5 Billion Infrastructure Improvement Plan.
Also, today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill and three resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City to enter into an agreement with the City of Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the PRA to act as the city's agent for the marketing, competitive bidding, sale and development as applicable of certain city-owned properties.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's convey conditional fee simple title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the thirty-second ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's convey conditional fee simple title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the thirty-second ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of twenty-nine thirty-seven North Eighth Street located in the fifth council manic district.
Also, next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I am introducing two bills and offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City to acquire fee simple title or a lesser interest in real estate by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation, agreement in lieu of condemnation or otherwise to parcels of land along the Delaware River and in the bed of the former Kensington and Tacony Railroad.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Tacony Street, Levick Street, Milner Street, and Barnett Street.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution congratulating and honoring the Crispin Cheerleading Team on the occasion of their successful season culminating in a win at the two thousand nineteen National Cheerleading Competition.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, today I offer one bill, two privileged, and one non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending section nine two oh five of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by prohibiting vending on City Avenue between Havreford Avenue and Seventy-seventh Street.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Phil Martelli for his many years of diligent service and success both on and off the basketball court during his tenure as head coach of the Saint Joseph's University Hawks men's basketball team.
That will be on today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution congratulating honoring Frederick L. Voight for fifty years of dedicated service to the residents of Philadelphia on the occasion of his retirement from the office of the Philadelphia City Commissioners.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution reappointing Michael Woodward to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion.
And that will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiyoona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing March twenty-fifth through March twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, as Immigrant Business Week in the City of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman McGinn.
Good morning, Council President. I have one privileged resolution sponsored by Councilmembers Squilla, Parker, Greenlee, Dom, and Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution declaring March thirty-one, two thousand nineteen, as Trans Day of Visibility in the City of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubmanberger.
Morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions this morning.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing Fox television stations to install, own, and maintain planters at three thirty Market Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of South Thirteenth Street and Dickinson Street, Federal Street and South Seventh Street, Federal Street and South Tenth Street, Annan Street and South Ninth Street, Eisenminger Street and Morris Street, Cross Street and Marsler Street, South Thirteenth Street and Reed Street.
Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions this week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I offer one bill cosponsored by councilmembers Blackwell, Bass, and Kiyoona Sanchez, and may I be heard after the title is read?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand nineteen within the general fund from the Office of Innovation and Technology, the Department of Public Health, and the Civil Service Commission to the Director of Finance Community College of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania passed Act four eighty-four, known as the Community College Act of nineteen sixty-three. It mandated equal funding from three sources, the state one-third, the city one-third, and students one-third. Although there have been changes to Act four eighty-four, the state law continues the call for at least one-third of the funding for community colleges to come from each community college's local sponsor, in that case, the City of Philadelphia. Because the city has not been meeting its mandatory minimum appropriations to Community College of Philadelphia for many years, students have been burdened with higher tuition costs. For this fiscal year's one hundred thirty-four point seven million dollar operating budgets, students provide fifty-five percent of the revenue, while the state provides twenty-four percent, and the city provides only nineteen percent. That is a shortfall of nineteen million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. The mayor's proposed municipal budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty unveiled two weeks ago falls short by eighteen million dollars of the state mandated one-third of community college proposed operating budget. We held a hearing on March twelfth, that is, the Committee on Education chaired by Councilwoman Blackwell and a committee chaired by myself, to examine why the City of Philadelphia has not been providing the minimum revenues required by the state to fund Community College of Philadelphia so that the city can begin the process of developing a plan to meet its financial obligation. Community College of Philadelphia is a vital asset to the city with approximately twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine students. It is the city's responsibility to ensure that it has the resources to serve its students. Its role is crucial to strengthening the regional workforce in an increasingly technological and global world. Furthermore, it is an invaluable resource in our community in addressing some of the most pressing issues such as violence, homelessness, and addiction. The last time the city provided thirty-three percent was nineteen eighty-three. Over the past twenty-one years, if you total the amount of shortfall in state mandated funding, that would equal three hundred twenty-six thousand, I mean, I'm sorry, three hundred twenty-six million, three hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars. I heard a poll today on the news, and it revealed that today, more than ever in our history, Americans do not feel they have a real opportunity to improve their lives. High tuition costs of university colleges, other things account for that, but Community College of Philadelphia and community colleges across America provide real quality opportunities for education at an affordable price. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. That bill will be referred to committee. And that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is reports from committee, and the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports eleven bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Streets and Services, to which is referred bill number one eight zero nine four four entitled an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Taney Street, West Side, Brown Street to Aspen Street, and bill number one eight zero nine four five entitled an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Marborough Street, West Side, Waldy Street to Richmond Street, and bill number one eight zero nine six seven entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Brown Street and Broad Street, Russell Street and Germantown Avenue, Rush Street and Park Avenue, and bill number one eight one zero six one entitled an ordinance amending section nine two oh five of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by prohibiting vending on both sides of Fifty-Sixth Street between Havreford Avenue and Vine Street, Fifty-Seventh Street between Havreford Avenue and Vine Street, and Vine Street between Fifty-Sixth Street and Fifty-Seventh Street, and bill number one eight one one zero zero entitled an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Park Avenue both sides, Dauphin Street to Susquehanna Avenue, and bill number one eight one one zero two entitled an ordinance establishing a no motorhome parking regulation on the fifty-three hundred Baca Woodbine Avenue both sides, and bill number one nine zero zero six one entitled an ordinance authorizing Timothy Lydiak doing business as the thirsty soul to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at fifteen fifty-one West Passianke Avenue, and bill number one nine zero zero eight one entitled an ordinance establishing a one-way regulation on Cecil Bemore Avenue from Front Street to Sixth Street westbound, and bill number one nine zero zero eight two entitled an ordinance establishing a one-way regulation on Montgomery Avenue from Second Street to Front Street eastbound, and bill number one nine zero zero eight four entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Marvine Street and Champlin Street, North Twelfth Street and Chu Avenue, Comax Street and Chu Avenue, North Twelfth Street and Champlin Street, North Ninth Street and Ruscombe Street, North Marvine Street and Champlin Avenue, and bill number one nine zero one six one entitled an ordinance authorizing Michael Myers doing business as Philadelphia N to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at four thirty-sixth East Girard Avenue. Respectfully reports it as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I move that the rules of council be suspended to submit the first reading this day of the eleven bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the eleven bills just read into the record by the clerk. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a report from the Committee on Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Public Health and Human Services, to which is referred bill number one eight zero nine three six entitled, an ordinance amending Title Six of the Philadelphia Code entitled Health Code relating to lead paint hazards and other violations, to provide for appeal periods and for penalties, to provide for inspections and fees, to revise definitions and to promote lead safety, and bill number one eight zero nine three seven entitled an ordinance amending chapter six two hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Preventative Medicine to establish requirements for the testing of blood lead levels in children. And bill number one nine zero nine three eight entitled an ordinance amending Title sixteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Property, adding a new section requiring that certain renovation projects involving city-owned or occupied buildings or the use of city capital dollars be certified as lead-free or lead-safe prior to the completion of the renovation project. Respectfully reports it as considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number one eight zero nine three six, one eight zero nine three seven, and one eight zero nine three eight.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number one eight oh nine thirty-six, one eight oh nine thirty-seven, one eight oh nine thirty-eight. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee, and our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just read, reported from committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had their first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. There's no additional bills on the first reading calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling in bills and resolutions that are on the final passes calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are bill numbers one nine zero one eight eight, one nine zero one eight nine, one nine zero one nine two, one nine zero one nine four, one nine zero one nine eight, one nine zero one nine nine, one eight zero eight six four, one nine zero zero six two. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Sorry. Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions that are on our final passes calendar today, we will have our public comment session. The public comment session must be on a bill or resolution that is on the final passes calendar today. If you have not already testified, you may already sign up at the table to my left for a bill or resolution that's on passage today. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium. On that podium, there's a device. The device has a light, and when that light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the lights turn yellow, you will have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks. When the lights turn red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and respectfully conclude your remarks. Thank you so much for your cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Emily Davis. Commenting on one eight one zero six three.
Morning.
Hi, my name is Emily Davis, and I ask you to please vote down bill one eight one zero six three, which would allow the city to enter a contract for a liquefied natural gas plant. At a time when the city is trying to lower its carbon footprint, this is not a time to permit the building of new facilities that support a system based on hydrocarbons. We have heard about the costly results of extreme weather, for example, Nebraska and Mozambique happening this week that have plagued the world in recent years. Ninety-seven percent of scientists believe climate change is caused by humans, and they know what humans are doing to cause that climate change. One of these activities is burning hydrocarbons. Scientists also know that one of the effects of climate change is extreme weather. These disasters are very costly. Our government says that in two thousand eighteen, there were fourteen weather and climate disaster events that exceeded a cost of one billion dollars each across the United States. So, Philadelphia is right in wanting to lower its carbon footprint. The financial advantage of this LNG plant is questionable. The annual budget of the City of Philadelphia is over four billion dollars. The income from this facility is projected to be less than point one percent of that. There are also questions about the private partner. I agree PGW needs help, but this is not it. As we transition away from the use of natural gas in our homes, we will need the support of PGW. But while one part of PGW maintains the old system and shrinks in size, a new part supporting sustainable energy sources and energy efficiency could be expanding. Please do not support this bill or any bill that supports new infrastructure for fossil fuels. Costs outweigh the benefits. Don't be complicit in our own destruction.
Thank you for your testimony.
Tamia Cipio Smith. Commenting on one nine zero one nine eight.
Good afternoon.
Good morning. My name is Tamia Cipio Smith. I'm the Education Policy Director at PCCY. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of the resolution today. Pennsylvania's charter school law gives Charter Appeals Board, or the CAB, tremendous power. It is the only body that hears charter school cases if a charter school appeals Philadelphia School Board's decision to deny, revoke, or renew a charter school application. It can override the local school board's decision and allow charter schools to open or continue to operate unless and until the district challenges the CAB decision in Commonwealth Court. Currently, five of the members of the CAB are serving expired terms. All were appointed by the former Governor Tom Corbett. One seat is vacant. PCCY is calling for a moratorium on CAB proceedings until all board members are serving unexpired terms and the vacancy is filled. To be clear, the petition was not launched as an attack on the governor. While we call on Governor Wolf to appoint new members, the Senate has at least as much at stake to fill the seats with board members serving unexpired terms and filling the vacancy. While the governor appoints, the Senate must also approve any new appointees. One of the reasons we called attention to the current situation was to bring all parties to the table to resolve this issue. For Philadelphia and its students, this resolution matters. The Philadelphia School District just regained local control and has a new school board. It just exercised an option not to approve charters for three new schools. If the charter appeals the decision, the CAB hears the case. It removes the decision from the Philadelphia School District, a district that receives high marks on its authorizing from pro-charter organizations that promote high-level quality authorizing, and places the decision right back in the hands of the state. Considering the gravity of their reviews and the impact their decision have on Philadelphia's public school students, placing a moratorium on the CAB proceedings until all board members are serving unexpired terms and the seat is filled, the open seat is filled, this is the correct decision and course of action. Thank you.
David Loeb. Commenting on one nine zero one nine four.
Hello, members of council, Council President Clark. I'm here to comment on bill one nine zero one nine four to authorize a study to assess the impact of certain taxes. And now, of course, this is about the soda tax. And look, we need to keep this tax in place. And so, I want to thank my councilperson, Councilman Squilla, for not cosponsoring the bill to repeal or reduce the soda tax. Pre-K is just so important for the city, and we need to preserve the funding stream that makes Philly pre-K possible. So, thank you again, Councilman Squilla, for not signing on to the effort to repeal the soda tax, and I look forward to watching you continue to fight for pre-K and for Philly's children. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Raynell Brown Staley. Commenting on one nine zero one nine eight.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Raynell Brown Staley, and I serve as Policy Director at the Education Law Center, an organization dedicated to ensuring that all of Pennsylvania's children have access to quality public education. Three weeks ago today, ELC released a new report on equity in Philadelphia's charter schools titled Safeguarding Educational Equity: Protecting Philadelphia Students' Civil Rights Through Charter Oversight. And you have copies of that report on your desks. In it, we identified a range of unaddressed equity issues in charter schools in areas such as enrollment, practices, special education, and education of English learners. We highlighted the role of Philadelphia's Board of Education in guarding against discriminatory practices in the city's charter schools, but we also noted the need for stronger charter oversight and accountability at all levels to protect student civil rights. Today, I offer testimony on an area where change is sorely overdue, the State Charter Appeal Board. The CAB is a uniquely powerful body in the realm of charter oversight. Local school boards have the power to deny a charter application or not renew or revoke an existing charter. The CAB has exclusive authority to affirm or overturn these local school board's decisions. The CAB's decisions aren't the acts of judges trained to strictly interpret the law and imply precedent. The six members of the CAB are governor-appointed, Senate-confirmed, community members, granted tremendous power over their term. By law, CAB members should be a parent of a school-aged child, a school board member, a certified teacher, a faculty member of a higher education institution, a member of the business community, and a member of the State Board of Education. Their qualifications are defined and their terms are limited out of recognition that the board should reflect the views of the community and change in composition over time. Our report and a wealth of national research indicate that current thinking about charter school oversight needs to evolve. We need to evaluate how well a charter school is doing, not just by looking at academic and financial performance, but at the students they're serving as well. A school can position itself to perform well on academic measures by enrolling students who already have some measure of educational privilege when they enter their doors. Likewise, a school can position itself to perform well on financial measures by enrolling students who require fewer resources and services to achieve academic success. If we focus on academic and financial performance to the exclusion of equity, we incentivize charters to underserve the students with the greatest educational needs, a phenomenon that's happening right now in Philadelphia. The members of the CAB need to be revisited by law and to reflect our current understanding of charter oversight. We support the work of council to bring needed attention to this issue and ensure that CAB members are duly appointed, duly confirmed, and serving unexpired terms. Given the tremendous power the CAB has to impact the well-being of our students in our district, it's important that Philadelphia, the site of more than half of the state's brick-and-mortar charters, use its influence to urge Harrisburg to act. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Lisa Haver. Lisa Haver. Commenting on one nine zero one nine eight.
Good morning, Council President.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Council President Clark, members of City Council, my name is Lisa Haver. I'm a retired Philadelphia teacher, co-founder of the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools. I'm speaking today on behalf of the members of APS to urge council to pass Resolution one nine zero one nine eight, calling for a moratorium on all PA Charter Appeal Board proceedings until Governor Wolf can make appointments. I want to thank councilmembers Ginn, Blackwell, and Greenlee, whose records show consistent support for public education for co-sponsoring the resolution. Last year, we shook off the yoke of state control and restored local control to our public schools. Both Mayor Kenny and this council reaffirmed their commitment to funding the city's schools. The mayor, council, and the community will continue to fight for the best education for our skilled children. Council has taken steps to increase its own oversight of the district. The new Board of Education is working hard to manage our schools through more public engagement in community meetings and in new committees where the public can be heard and where true deliberation on issues is taking place. The Board made a definitive statement last month when it unanimously rejected three clearly inadequate applications for new charter schools. Those decisions should be final. The Board is responsible for representing the people of the city and how the district spends its money. That's why it makes no sense that even with our return to local control, an obscure board made up of state appointees should have the power to overrule the decisions of our local school board. The Charter Appeals Board meets in Harrisburg and is made up of individuals who are unknown to this community, do not live in this community, do not pay taxes in this community, and have no accountability in this community. The Charter Appeal Board is currently made up of appointees of former Governor Corbett, most of whose terms have expired. The power to decide which schools this district or any district creates or chooses not to cannot be made by political appointees with no connection to this district. When we lost twenty-four public schools in 2013, there was no legal appeal for the students or the parents of those schools. Agree or disagree, that decision was final. The Charter Appeal Board should be abolished. It is wrong for local officials to be overruled by an out-of-town group of unknown political appointees. And until it is, we're calling for a moratorium on all CAB proceedings until the expired terms can be filled by Governor Wolf. Philadelphians have the right to determine what is best for our city and what is best for the stakeholders of the school district. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Valerie Valens. Commenting on one nine zero one nine two.
Good morning. To Council President Clark, the members of City Council, and all those assembled here, my name is Valerie G. C. Valens, President of Beta Delta Zeta Chapter, the Philadelphia Graduate Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. I can't tell you how humbled I am to stand before you, representing a chapter that the principal founder of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated was a member of and chartered nearly seventy-five years ago. Imagine an African-American woman who founded an organization nearly one hundred years ago and the organization is still thriving, with over one hundred and twenty-five thousand college-educated women and with chapters that exist not only in the United States but also around the globe. Imagine a woman who defied the typical stereotypes that existed with sorority and fraternity life in the early nineteen hundreds and founded an organization that was based on service, scholarship, sisterhood, and finer womanhood. This woman's name was Arizona Cleaver Stemmons. She was the first national president of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. She attended Howard University, where Zeta was founded on January sixteenth, nineteen twenty, and completed her graduate and postgraduate studies in the field of social work. And ironically, on today, you just proclaimed the month of March as Social Workers Month. So, thank you for that. She was responsible for chartering numerous undergraduate and graduate chapters throughout the United States, including Ada Chapter at Temple University here in Philadelphia and Beta Delta Zeta Chapter, the chapter that I stand here representing today. She resided on the nineteen-hundred block of Federal Street in South Philadelphia for fifty-two years. Her address was nineteen fifteen Federal Street and currently, the house is owned by my chapter and we affectionately call it the Founder's House. It is because of the contributions of Founder Emerita Stemmons that I proudly stand before you in support of Resolution one nine zero one nine two for the co-naming of the nineteen-hundred block of Federal Street to Arizona C. Stemmons Way. And on behalf of my chapter, I wish to thank Councilwoman Kenyatta Johnson, Councilwoman Londell Reynolds Brown, and the other members of council who co-sponsored this resolution. Additionally, I'd like to also thank our soror Katherine Gilmore. My chapter greatly appreciates you and thanks you for your consideration.
Mr. Decker, looking for a cue. Mr. Decker, we have, I think we have four ladies that are going to testify on this. Why don't you all just tee up so you can just all come up? We'll call the names, Mr. Decker, call the names of the...
Taj McKelly. Jennifer Santiago. Sanaya Johnson. And Diane Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, President, and members of the Philadelphia City Council. My name is Taj McKelly. I am a member of Beta Delta Zeta Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, where I serve as the first Vice President. It is an honor to stand before you today and encourage that this resolution comes to life. As a humble member of this organization, I recognize what my founder, Arizona C. Stemmons, at a young age, on the campus of Howard University did when her and four other members decided to originate this sorority. They dedicated their life to principles of scholarship, service, sisterly love, and finer womanhood. She took those principles and came here to the city of Philadelphia and worked for the Department of Human Service. As you, she has dedicated her life to serving the city, just as you have. By passing this resolution, it is a testament to her legacy and the legacy of the sorority. And I highly thank you and I encourage you for continuing recognizing the members of our sorority. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Good afternoon. Just state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer A. Santiago Esquire. I am a proud member of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. However, my presence here today is as the President of the National Pan-Hellenic Council for Southeastern Pennsylvania. Thank you. Our council currently serves all of the Philadelphia area, Montgomery County, Delaware County, and Bucks County. Our council represents all nine members of what is commonly called the Divine Nine. We serve twenty-three chapters. We stand here proudly supporting Resolution one nine zero one nine two because the recognition of one founder of any of our organizations is the recognition of all of our organizations. It is the recognition of all of the hard work and the service that all of our organizations are founded on. We may wear different letters, we may wear different colors, but all of our organizations founded on service and scholarship. By City Council recognizing my triumphant founder, Arizona Cleaver Stemmons, you are saying to the city of Philadelphia, "We thank you, Divine Nine. We thank you for the service that you proudly give to our city. We thank you for all that you do." So we thank you, City Council, for looking at us, looking at our most triumphant founder, Arizona Cleaver Stemmons, and saying to Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated that we thank you for not leaving South Philadelphia, for not leaving the nineteen-hundred block of Federal Street. We thank you for continuing to provide outstanding service that your founder put forth and designated as a principal founding formation. We thank you for not going astray. We thank you for continuing on the path that was set forth almost one hundred years ago. Again, standing before you as the President for the National Pan-Hellenic Council, what I frequently tell our council is that we were not divine until we were all nine. The biblical meaning of the word nine is God's perfect love. And so we thank you, City Council, for allowing the Divine Nine to be God's perfect love to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Sania M. Johnson, CPA, the immediate past President of Beta Delta Zeta Chapter, immediate past Chairman and President of Girls Incorporated of Greater Philadelphia in Southern New Jersey, past Board Member of the National Organization of Girls Incorporated, a PA Delegate for Vision 2020. A Philadelphia native, I've lived throughout the city, in Nice Town, West Philly, across the street from the Blackwell family home, actually, and I now reside in the Eighth District of Philadelphia in Cindy Bass's area. I rise and represent Philadelphians. I rise and represent the many members of our organization, the hundreds in the city of Philadelphia, the tens of thousands around the world. And I rise on behalf of women and girls in support of the recognition of a woman in this city who has impacted the entire United States and beyond and will become a symbol for all that we and you as a City Council will recognize a woman in a meaningful way in the address of the nineteen-hundred block of Federal Street. So we thank you for supporting this resolution, Councilwoman Johnson, and we thank you for this obvious recognition of women during Women's History Month and as we observe Finer Womanhood Month. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am Diane Wilson, the eleventh State Director for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. I am also a proud member of Beta Delta Zeta Chapter. I am a teacher by profession. So that caused me to research the reasons why streets are renamed and the controversies. I found one of the main controversies often centers around losing the identity of the street, even when the name of the street is tied to a person or an event. That led me to research how Federal Street was named. I discovered that it was because it was a road between two federal properties. The Old School Hill Arsenal, which was located on Gray's Ferry Avenue, and the original Philadelphia Navy Yard, which began in seventeen seventy-six on Front Street and Federal Street. Now, many people use the renaming of a street as a way to honor someone. Change a street name and you change the way people think about the city. It's where ideology meets asphalt. Arizona Cleaver Stemmons' ideology has resulted in a ninety-nine-year-old organization that continues to affect change, raise consciousness, and encourage high scholastic achievement. Just as her idea to found an organization transcended the boundaries of Howard University, we, the members of the Philadelphia Graduate Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, feel her legacy should transcend the boundaries of nineteen fifteen Federal Street.
Commenting on one eight one zero six three.
Hi, my name is Minel Raval. I'm a Philly resident. Well, wait a minute. That's from last week. How did that happen? I'm still a Philly resident and I'm here today to speak on Bill number one eight one oh six three, authorizing PGW to enter into a public-private partnership with Liberty Energy Trust to develop the Passyunk Energy Center. You must know that gas is a fossil fuel, that adding to our dependency of fossil fuels at this late stage of a planetary climate fever is immoral and dangerous. Today, as I passed through security, I was stopped because I had a steel fork in my bag. We aren't talking about a pitchfork, but a dinner fork. Many of us, keenly aware of our city's litter problem and our oceans choking with plastic, have chosen to avoid using single-use plastics, single-use plastics such as forks, water bottles, straws, and checkout bags, because single-use plastics are made of fossil fuels, which we need to use so much less of. I want to thank Councilman Squilla for leading on reducing our city's usage of single-use plastic bags. So while my fork waits for me by the security team, I'm here asking, how can council consider a steel fork dangerous and not consider a large fossil fuel project dangerous? So please, vote down Bill one eight one oh six three when it comes up for a vote. I'm also here to speak about Bill number one eight one zero six seven, introduced December sixth of last year by Councilmember Reynolds Brown. This bill calls for public hearings about executing the mayor's municipal energy master plan, which calls for all of the city's municipal facilities to use one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty. By the way, twelve municipalities in Greater Philadelphia have passed resolutions to transition their energy use to one hundred percent renewable, community-wide, public and private. We can offer a presentation to any of you who want to learn more about the Ready for One Hundred Renewable Energy Campaign. Thank you.
Commenting on one nine zero one nine four.
Good afternoon. Buenas tardes. My name is Nellie Sepulveda. I am a fifty-one-year-long resident of Philadelphia. Much of that time was spent in District Seven, but for the last twenty years, the honor of living in District Nine. I am here to comment on Bill one nine zero one nine four, which authorizes a study on the impact of certain taxes. I'm also here to ask that City Council continue to support the beverage tax as it directly benefits thousands of three- and four-year-olds. We need to have more opportunities for children, not less. It is clear and the data supports that children in early learning opportunities do much better than those children that do not have those opportunities. It is the most important investment we can make to ensure that our children are growing up to be contributing members of society and leaders in our communities. I wish to thank my City Councilmember, Sherrell Parker, for standing by the twenty-two hundred children right now who are in Philly pre-K and for not co-sponsoring the bill to repeal or reduce the beverage tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheila Armstrong. Commenting on one eight zero seven two nine.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Ooh, this, I don't, this microphone, not for me. I'm already a loudmouth. How y'all doing, everyone? My name is Sheila Armstrong. I'm here to speak about the Horace, where did I write that on that paper? Oh, it was the Horace, one eight zero two nine. All right, I lied, okay? My name is Sheila Armstrong and I'm here today because I'm just here to serve Councilman Clark his papers for the hearing tomorrow, okay? Since I'm running against him and it's hard to try to track you down, sir, okay? So here is me officially serving you. Because I'm challenging you since you're challenging me. Tick, tack, tick. Hi, you should have just left me alone. There you go. So, one of y'all poor people, did y'all get... Oh, all right, thank you. That's all I needed.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Also, any media people, I would like to talk to media people outside about the candidate intimidation that our councilmen has been doing towards me and my campaign. So if anybody would like to talk... Offering jobs and stuff like that, come on, man, this time is over. This time is over, ladies and gentlemen. I'm tired of croaking politics because it's messing up my community. I live in a low-income community. Oh, talk for the mic. Okay, yes, it's still my time. All right. I live in a low-income community, ladies and gentlemen, and all this prosperity that is going on in the city has not hit my community. It has not been there in the past three years. We've been holding the... We've been holding the title of the poorest urban city in the whole nation, and that is a disgrace to me, okay? Because all of y'all been here more than three years, more than five years, and some of y'all 10 years. So how we don't have a plan to address poverty for my community? That's just wrong. Maybe because y'all didn't care so much, maybe y'all didn't want to do so much or anything like that. I don't care. I'm not even here. The problem, the reason why I'm here, sir, is because I'm tired of the politics and game. All I want to do is run my race. I told everybody I wanted to run my race. Everybody you got called me, I told them I ain't want nothing. I was running my race that God purposed on my heart. I told you that when I met with you at Dunkin' Donuts. And I told you the other day when you and Greenlee, how you called me Greenlee, remember me, Sheila Armstrong, when you were standing on the corner supporting your friend? Support your friend in that hearing tomorrow, too, okay? And also, all right, because this is just wrong. All right, I'm not scared. I always spoke up for what was right. I am a woman of faith and woman of God, and I do what he purposed on my heart. He told me to run this race, and that's what I'm going to do. I asked you to leave me alone, just let me run the race, because it's a message I had to give to the people. But you made it about you, sir. It was never about you. I told you it was never about you. It was about the people I serve in my low-income community that ain't getting the services. But y'all steady helping y'all friends do stuff. I'm tired of this. Enough is enough. My nuts are off.
Thank you.
And you want to run it for a single month that works for my campaign for me? You strike up a fraud? Man, please, I'm leaving. Oh, trust me, I'm done. I ain't here to say what I have to say.
Joe Danahell.
Y'all should have let me know that Sheila won the damn race, and I'm going into, in my fight, this is horrible, my mother, y'all want to be bothering me, and bothering me. Hey, sir, you want to see me walk? Many people are not ready for it, and I'm hurting.
Thank you.
And this is a protest, and you guys don't even regret my people, that's what I do. I fight for people all day. And then my next step is to report that to y'all.
Okay, good afternoon. This is an official decree of the people, and remand them, squo, warto. As such, requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to the government, probably illegally. The U.S. Attorney General, Mick Swain, correctly identified the failure to perform a known duty or task is illegal and causes great harm. Military people know this action is treason. For over 90 times in this very room, I have decreed government officials to act and have suffered greatly from their failure to perform a known duty or task. Council chambers are usually occupied by the Philadelphia Police. And in fact, the Police Commissioner has been in council recently. The state police, upon discussions, have ceded their authority to the armed Philadelphia Police. The Philadelphia Police have witnessed, in their presence in my case, over 90 times, a conspiracy to deny numerous God-given rights, including, among others unnamed, 42 PACS A902, conduct which imperils my personal security or private property rights. Is therefore decreed to the police officers to perform their duty to arrest every council person and staff. The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your office requires you to act or face prison. 42 USC 982, 983, 985, 986, 987, 18 USC 241, 242, 2381, 2384, PA Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 28, 26 PACSA, 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716, 902, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violating. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 USC 982 property rights for 25 years is egregious, extraordinary oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter governed revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse a sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to play fire. The sovereign people require oath, constitution, law be enforced, and jail is required for or violate oath, constitution, or law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow this monumental corruption.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment session. And our next order of business is bills and resolutions on our final passes calendar. Mr. Decker.
Please read the title, 190188. Our resolution urging the United States Congress to reject President Trump's proposed budget cuts to the United States Department of Education.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption.
Thank you. It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and Resolution 190188 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190189.
Our resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house number and street address, as 2337 through 2345 West Burke Street.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, 190189 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190192.
Our resolution also naming Federal Street between 19th Street and 20th Street Arizona C. Stemmons Way in honor of Arizona Ledonia Cleaver Stemmons, the initializing founder of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, one of the largest organizations for women in the country.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Johnson.
Council President, I proudly move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second. It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, 190192. Congratulations. Mr. Decker, 190194.
Our resolution authorizing City Council to hire and retain an independent third party to conduct research and produce a study on the fiscal and economic impact of certain taxes and fees, and authorizing the Committee on Appropriations to conduct hearings to consider such study.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. In 2016, I was proud to be part of a legislative body that passed 13 to 4 a bold investment in children, communities, and neighborhoods that had too often been left behind. Pre-K, community schools, the rebuilding of our public spaces are bold investments in fragile institutions for whom there are far too few lobbies. When we passed this bill, we knew that we could no longer talk about the crisis of disinvestment and neglect in children or in our neighborhoods in terms of charitable ventures, hopes, and possibilities, but we had to take big actions, major investments, because we know that combating poverty will never, will never be cheap. And, you know, this week, my, our, my own council member, Councilwoman Brown Dell Reynolds Brown, held a hearing in which we talked about how the children of Philadelphia are poisoned in our city at rates that are higher than Flint, Michigan. We had to take a stand. Pre-K, community schools, rebuild, remain a legacy achievement for this council. But from the moment, from the moment we even breathed this idea into possibility, we have been under relentless attack by the American Beverage Association, which has spent millions of dollars to divide us, and I know that they will spend millions more. They will not stop. It is their millions that put us in litigation for years and held up the expansion of pre-K to less than a fraction of what it should have been by this time. It was their millions that held up the, the, the keeping down of the community schools initiative to half of what it should be by this time. And it was their millions that prevent, or only now just allowed for the first ribbon cuttings to be allowed for the rebuild programs. Now, let me be clear, because a lot of people wonder what's wrong with the study. We've had plenty of studies that examined the impacts of the beverage tax. We've had it from the National Bureau of Economics Research, Expert Economics, the City Controller put one out. And in December, I supported, along with this council, Resolution 18116, calling for a study and hearings on the beverage tax. But how long are we going to allow this to continue? And how long are we going to allow this body to be used for the narrow interests of one particular lobby? So I'm going to vote no against a duplicative resolution clearly drafted and peddled by the Beverage Association as a companion to a pre-K killing legislation. And I'm going to urge my colleagues to vote no, because combined with a pre-K killing legislation, this is not an honest study. This resolution calls for an independent study, but it does not call for a neutral one. And I am not interested in facilitating the creation of a so-called independent study. I am interested in one that examines this tax from a neutral standpoint, that can see the positive benefits of this tax for years to come. Economists around the country are studying the benefits of pre-K and this tax. Let's wait and see what, and debate their work. Now, I am as good a government person, as, as good government a person as anyone in this city. I have fought for transparency and accountability for struggling institutions all my life, but I've done so from the belief and the, and the understanding that we have to bring a sense of purpose and investment to fragile institutions long neglected and underfunded. And I can tell you that I can see through a charade whose purpose is to drum up opposition that will only breed cynicism and distrust on a signature initiative in this city. So that is why I'm voting no, because I'm thinking of the families in our communities, the rebuild ribbon cuttings, our growing community schools, and I'm thinking of the families and the children whose lives hang on the balance, and I'm not going to let them down. So I'm going to buy into this narrative and vote no. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilwoman Gimm, for sharing your very well-meaning and heartfelt comments. I, too, am going to be voting no on this resolution. And my rationale is less about the beverage industry, because I respect my colleagues who were a no when we voted on this. I served for 10 years in a body that consisted of 203 members, and I agreed to disagree with a lot of them on a lot of different issues. But this, what I call a thinly veiled attempt at demonstrating what W.E.B. Du Bois called the double consciousness, a double consciousness, I stand by my vote that was cast for the tax, and I do that unapologetically, and for those who were against it, you had a right to be. But this idea of now using this legislative format to put this issue on an agenda so that it can be used as a form of political weaponry against our colleagues who were for it is a little insulting to me. And I say it to you, Mr. President, because what I immediately thought about was the third-party independent audit review study that we just conducted of the Office of Property Assessment. I thought about this, the independent third-party study that we did of retirement security for private sector workers in the city of Philadelphia, and, Mr. President, both of them were done without a resolution. Both of them were done, Mr. President, with all due respect, by your power and authority as the leader of this body, and any of us who are interested in acquiring a third-party independent study or audit of anything, we have the ability to garner up the support of our colleagues, and we can go and get, request one, and we do that with you. In addition to that, Councilwoman Gimm already referenced the studies that had taken place already. I say to each of my colleagues who cast a vote, we will vote on many different things in this body, and we will make some, we will make some tough choices. For those of us who have chosen, and some of us are coming under what appears to be an insurmountable amount of heat because you chose to take the tough vote, I say thank you for standing up and not allowing this issue, because it's the timing for me, Mr. President. Now, you see, if this were introduced, and you talked about the resolution that was passed some time ago, but if this was done, let's say this is, this is 1916, in the middle of 17, you know, I, I probably would have thought about it a little differently. But to, but to do it now, and not only do it when you're calling for a third-party independent study, audit, review, but at the same time to introduce a bill that could in essence repeal it. So wait, are you telling me that you think you know what the results of the data is going to be before you get it, because you introduce an instrument that could in essence repeal the tax? I say to residents in the 9th Councilmatic District, open up the phone, because I, I want to note this for the record. I want to specifically say to all of my pre-K providers, because you've been calling me since this was introduced. We have 16 centers in the 9th Councilmatic District. 359 of were the total slots that were allocated, 347 were filled, and that's an average fill rate of 97%. I want to say to you all, particularly the African-American women, small business owners, who I fought very hard for during this process, so that you could get back room technical support to professionalize your home-based businesses that were supporting our community, I am not going to abandon you. I respect the right of my colleagues to be where they are going to be, but I do not have a double consciousness about my decision. In addition to that, I really, really want to affirm the timing that this was introduced at the same time of, that the bill and that is used as a form of political weaponry. And to my colleagues, and particularly the two who I know are feeling it the most right now, thank you for your consciousness. Thank you for your integrity. Thank you for your morality and standing for what you believe in. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gino Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to give my colleagues the respect that they are unwilling to give to me. And allowing me to use the vote, the vote of confidence that my constituents, when they vote for me, give me, to sit here and support and defend them. Ensure Similac and other products have been unintended consequences of what folks and I have been adamantly against this from day one, because I spent 11 years in this council promoting and changing the trajectory of business tax reform in the city of Philadelphia. The BRT tax, use and occupancy tax, single sales factor, so I'm against regressive taxes across the board. Shame on us, and I consider myself a progressive, shame on us if we believe that funding good things only comes at the expense of poor people. I will not fall for that. The timing of this is appropriate because it is until recently that this has been declared lawful. And if it's going to be part of a portfolio of revenue, whether I'm for or against it, we should look at unintended consequences. I'm okay with people disagreeing on my strategy and my tactic. I do not take it personal. But please, please don't question my motivation. Please do not question when I sit here and defend the people in deep poverty in this district and question my commitment to public education. I have taken a whole lot of difficult votes here around public education and my support for young people. It's not an either-or. So thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you.
I ask all of my colleagues to continue to support a process. We don't have to be comfortable with it. We don't always have to agree with it, but we have, do have to be respectful that we come here representing interest. And my interests are poor people in my community, store owners who are now being audited against, for, for this legislation. So I will stick to process that I got elected to serve. So I will stick to process that I got elected to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes is Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, I'll be voting for this resolution. I understand some of the concerns that were raised. I think it is, in fairness, could be called duplicative of some other studies that are being done, but I don't think it's necessarily, should be a bad thing to ask for a study. I will say, though, that it should not be interpreted in any way that some of the members that might be voting for this resolution are in any way favor of undoing the soda tax. I want to state for the record, if the vote came up again, I'd vote the same way I did the last time. I think the soda tax was necessary. I understand some of the concerns about it. But again, and I would certainly not be for a bill to undo it at this point. But I think it is, we have asked for studies on a lot of things over time, and I think it's reasonable, although I understand the concern, to ask for this particular study. And I would be, with some hesitation, vote for this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Yes, Mr. President. I am trying to be as tight with my comments as possible. And so let me start where Councilman Bill Greenlee left off. If the vote came up again, I would be for the soda tax. The record should reflect, however, that when we had the discussions of the soda tax X number of months ago, it was my office that looked for alternatives. We looked at what other municipalities were doing, and we learned late that the container tax was a possible alternative. But because my staff and I did not do our homework early enough, we could not secure the vote for the container tax. And the jury is still out on whether or not the container tax may have indeed achieved the same end with less onerous outcomes or circumstances to small business. I have learned as a teacher that data matters, data, research matters, be it 9 o'clock in the morning or midnight. And it's my understanding, yes, agreed that a number of studies were done before the initiative was implemented. Now we have data during the actual execution of that initiative, and that data should inform us on how and what we do going forward. And so I am for subsequent research that gives us information that we did not have but for the soda tax. Secondly, I actually took a tour of ShopRite with Jeff Brown, and I was disheartened to learn that seniors are being taxed with the Ensure. And parents who have children who take Similac are being taxed with the sugar in Similac. So that is an unintended consequence. Yes, we should continue the soda tax, but there is value in looking to see how and if it is necessary for us to exempt some of those unintended consequences. So yes, research has value. I don't care what time it is on the clock. And the hope is that now that this important measure has been put in place and has given us, because I did ask for the data, on how our Councilmatic Districts are faring. Children are benefiting, parents are benefiting. It was a necessary action, not a comfortable one, but a necessary action. We took it, we need to stand by it. However, there's still value in getting subsequent information based on the new evidence that that research will give us. So I'm for it now, I'm for it later, I'm always for data and research, because we can never have too much information upon which we use to make responsible decisions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman O., you don't, you're good, never mind. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say a couple of things, and, you know, I know that there's been a lot of conversation in the last week about the bill and the resolution around soda tax. But I just wanted to address a couple of things. The first is that just today, Ernest Owens from Philadelphia Magazine came out with what I think is an excellent article around soda tax and the disparities and how we, you know, have this mixed message of saying that, you know, well, we want you to keep drinking soda and, and, you know, have this unhealthy habit to pay for these programs. And at the same time, we want you to stop drinking soda because it's unhealthy, and, you know, we'll figure it out some other kind of way. It's a really strange, mixed message. And so I just really want to encourage folks to check that article out for themselves. And I really think it'll give a lot of people a whole different perspective on this argument in terms of who is actually paying the tax. And as I've said before, it's almost as if, you know, for folks in poor communities, it's saying, okay, well, we're going to help you with your children, we're going to fix your children, but y'all won't pay for it. And so that's something that really needs to be looked at. As far as the vote and the timing of the vote, you know, I do take exception with suggesting that the timing of the vote is an issue because it's election time. You are who you are, who you are. You should have your conscience on at all times. I believe, as a member of this body, that how we would vote today should not differ if it was coming up on Election Day, if it was the day after Election Day. Where you are and where you stand should not be relevant as it relates to a particular time of year or election season. And the one last thing I wanted to point out is that the, as far as I know, from speaking with my colleagues, everyone who has signed onto the bill and the resolution have agreed that the programs are important. The programs should stay. How do we fund them is the question. And that is what folks are going to be looking at. How do we make sure that we keep universal pre-K? How do we make sure that we keep rebuild and we keep our community school programs, but at the same time find a better and more stable way to pay for them? So I just really wanted to be on record with just a couple of things, and I look forward to voting for this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I think everyone on this council is in favor of pre-K and rebuild. I don't think that's the question. From my perspective, when I introduced the resolution back in December to look at this, I had a different theory on this, and I just wanted to take a look at it. And that is called the theory of elasticity, where because we're, at some point, because there's been studies done, independent studies, three economists, I think Yale, University of Minnesota, University of Wisconsin, that showed that 42% of the beverage sales in Philadelphia were reduced. This is an independent study, not paid before by Beverage or the administration. Yet within zero to six miles of the county road, 42% of the sales were increased. And so my interest is knowing, if we were to adjust the rate, could we still get the same revenue? And should we study that? Because I'd rather have, if people are going over and driving to Bucks County, or South Jersey, or the Main Line, at least I'd rather have the business in our city, I'd rather have the jobs in our city, and I'd rather have the taxes in our city. So my question is, if we study this, could one of the questions be, on the elasticity of the rate, we lower it to 1 and 1/4, 1 or .8, whatever it is, can we achieve the same revenue and not have people drive over the line? So thank you, and I hope that's part of the study. Thank you.
All right. All right. Yeah, well, I'm not supposed to speak up here, so I won't. You know, some limitations of being the council president. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we do the motion yet? Need a motion? Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, 190, 194. Been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Think the ayes have it, unless somebody is requesting a voice vote. All right. Ayes have it. 190, 194 is adopted for the purpose of getting an independent third party to conduct research and produce a study. Thank you. Mr. Decker, 190, 198.
A resolution urging Governor Wolf to make appointments to the Pennsylvania Charter Appeal Board and calling for a moratorium on its proceedings until all board members are duly appointed and confirmed by the Pennsylvania Senate to serve in a four-year, in four-year unexpired terms.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. And Resolution 190, 198 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190, 199.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment in Urban Manola, of a portion of the Pensport, Urban Manola area identified by house number and street address as 1218 South Second Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. 190, 199 is adopted. 19, I'm sorry, 180, 864.
And ordinance, amending Chapter 171500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Annual Disparity Study and Participation Goals by providing for further detail relating to, among other things, North American Industry Classification System Codes.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Our bill?
Got a little thrown off by the debate. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kuna Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Taubenberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present, voting affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 190, 062.
And ordinance, authorizing the commissioner of public property, on behalf of the city of Philadelphia, to acquire fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest to all a portion of a parcel or parcels of land, together with the improvements there on in and about the area bounded by Trenton Avenue, East Auburn Street, Tulip Street, and East Rush Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kuna Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Taubenberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present, voting affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution honoring Philadelphia's philanthropic women leaders in recognition of Women's History Month, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating and honoring the Crispin Cheerleading Team on the occasion of their successful season culminating in a win at the 2019 National Cheerleading Competition, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Phil Martelli for his many years of diligent service and success, both on and off the basketball court, during his tenure as head coach of the St. Joseph's University Hawks Men's Basketball Team, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating and honoring Frederick Elboy for 50 years of dedicated service to the residents of Philadelphia, on the occasion of his retirement from the Office of the Philadelphia City Commissioners, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Again, Mr. President, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing March 25th through March 29th, 2019, as Immigrant Business Week in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Kuna Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring March 31, 2019, as Trans Day of Visibility in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
There are another resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to note that I put a flyer on every council member's desk and thank them, because we are in Martial Arts Week. We had a kickoff, nice kickoff on Monday in the courtyard, where we had demonstrations and we had matches, and it was a lot of fun. But some of the schools are offering open houses. The Juniper Muay Thai Gym on March 20th, the Philadelphia Aikido on March 20th and 24th, Capoeira on March 21st and 23rd, Red Tiger Taekwondo, March 22nd, Yorara Force Judo and Sambo, March 22nd, Gracie Academy Jiu-Jitsu, March 23rd. And for any members, if you come at 11 o'clock, I will be there to host you, so come on by. And Mainline Judo, March 24th and 31st. So everybody, enjoy the week, and we hope to do a bigger and better one next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. Speeches on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilwoman. Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Data-driven and research-based information is always important, but the simple facts are too. And just for the benefit of any seniors from the Ninth Councilmatic District who may be watching us today, I want you to note for the record that the Ensure that Dorothy Parker, my grandmother, used to drink when, and many of you drink, and I'll see you all at the West Oak Lane Senior Citizen Center in a few minutes, it is not taxed. But you do know that the very specific milkshakes that some doctors prescribe, that is what is referenced. So again, the cans of Ensure, Councilman Johnson, that my, I used to go to Pickwell for, to get for my grandmother, they are not taxed, because facts matter too. In addition to that, to the pre-K providers and all of the mothers who are, who are listening to this debate, I want to note for the record that baby formula is specifically exempted. If you go anywhere and they are taxing your Similac or your Infamil, they are doing it against this law, because this law specifically exempts baby formula. And I just thought that it was important, while we want to ensure that we have a data-driven and research-based process, and the elasticity of the tax, Councilman Dom, I think getting that data is going to be good. We went through it for the cigarette tax, so I'm well aware of that kind of process. But the misinformation that is often distributed, and then I have, I have to go out and talk to my constituency day and will have to undo, when a senior citizen says to me, I know you did it in 16, and I know what you said, the reason was, or why you did it, Sherrell, but I didn't know that my regular Ensure was being taxed. That's wrong! In addition to that, this baby formula is specifically exempted. And I want to just note for again the record, I will never, ever question what is on the inside of my colleagues and what drives us. But there is nothing that anyone can tell me to make me believe otherwise, that the timing of this legislation being proffered, and I'm referencing both the bill along with the resolution, that the timing is so that it will significantly impact those people, particularly in council districts, who have opponents that are being funded from the industry. And if somebody wants me to think otherwise, you're going to have a whole lot of convincing to do. I know that all's fair and love war and politics. Nobody gets that better than me. I done lost a whole lot, so I know what that feels like. But when you're going to tell the truth about why you do what you do, say it! And if I wanted it, Council President, I probably would have gone to you, sir, to say, the process that we use to get the independent third-party audit that we just did, that I think was very helpful, Mr. President, of our Office of Property Assessment, I would have probably said, can we use that process? But everyone takes the strategy and you use the vehicle, and we do have a right to that. And I respect the right that we have to move legislatively, but don't, don't like, you know, tell me it's not right.
me it's not raining and I'm feeling, and what I feel with the timing of this. And some of us are feeling it more than others. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Sounds like a whole lot of profits over people conversation going on in this room, and I don't think that's what, you know, we represent and who we are as a body and as a legislator and the constituent service. And it also sounds like if people are selling products and illegally taxing them, it sounds like a class act or suit to me, and I hope that this city pursues in that venue, if that is the case, because people, profits will never supersede people in the city of Philadelphia. That being said, talking about people, I had the pleasure of joining Coaches for Cancer again, as I do, almost on an annual basis, with the Building Trades and Local Ninety-eight and as one of the sponsors. And we honor, we had a resolution here honoring Phil Martelli from our colleague, Councilman Jones, in his departure and tenure, twenty-four-year tenure at Saint Joe's. And we have Fran Duffy, who is at Temple. So we're losing two, I think, very well-respected on and off of the court in their way they communicate and engage with the communities, engage with local boys and girls clubs and charity events. And so the Big Five is losing two icons here in the city of Philadelphia. The Big Five also is ranked number one in the nation for raising funds for Coaches for Cancer. Number one, by far. Nobody can ever touch them in their philanthropic and their endeavors in the fight for cancer. So I want to commend them in their efforts of doing that, because it isn't all about basketball. A lot of times, we get caught up in the hype and the wins and the losses, but, you know, they're winning every single day. And speaking of Big Five and wins, we do have Nova Nation, all right, they're on at seven o'clock tonight. They're the only number, they're only one left in the Big Five that's going to be playing. So they're going to be on at ten o'clock, and hopefully Nova will continue on in the tournament. I think, you know, we had a great parade. So I have shirts for Nova Nation in celebration, our Big Five, and encouraging Villanova in its fight to the next round. So thank you for your time. Go Nova.
Thank you, Councilmen. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Yes, I just want to offer a friendly reminder to my colleagues and staff to please join us next door as we lift up and celebrate the Zetas and the new street that is being celebrated in Councilman Kenyatta Johnson's district. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman, while you had a mic, can you please call for an adjournment?
Sure. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March twenty-eighth, twenty-eight, twenty nineteen, at ten a.m.
Moving second. Council stand adjourned until Thursday, March twenty eighth, twenty nineteen, at ten a.m. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much.